Was looking to locate in Aiken County. Ultimately, it did not, and one of the reasons was sewer capacity. Ultimately, it kind of came to light during that process that the quote-unquote regional system treatment facility for our area, Aiken, and part of Edgefield County, and even part of Saluda County, the Horse Creek wastewater treatment facility was at capacity. So this is kind of in response to a lot of that. So what does Edgefield County water and sewer have right now as far as wastewater treatment systems? We have a plant located here in Edgefield, it's called our Brook Street wastewater treatment plant. It currently is at a rated capacity of 750,000 gallons a day. We also have a plant in Johnston that's rated at 900,000 gallons a day. Pretty much handles the wastewater for our two largest towns. Everything from Trenton South really goes into what we call the regional sewer system. It consists of a large 18-inch force main that travels down Highway 25, goes to Interstate I-20, crosses under I-20, then down a Skoggal Lake Road through North Augusta system, and ultimately to the Horse Creek plant. This system was put into service in the mid-1990s. It was initially going to be just Edgefield, city of North Augusta, and Aiken. Saluda came in a couple of years later to form this regional system. This system, though, isn't a true regional system in the sense that everybody is regional partners in the system. It basically acts as a function of everybody is a customer of somebody else. Saluda is our customer, we're a North Augusta customer, and North Augusta is ultimately Horse Creek's customer. As such, we don't own any capacity directly in the Horse Creek wastewater treatment plant. And I'll get into a little bit more about the definition of capacity in just a minute, because that's a kind of complicated subject in and of itself. All of the current industrial dischargers that we have in Edgefield County go into this regional system. So Millikan and Johnston, TranTech, all of those, the industrial park goes into the industrial system. And also, like I said earlier, from Trenton South, where our development is occurring, those go into that regional system as well. And that plant itself is currently rated at 20 million gallons per day of treatment capacity. Now, what is capacity? You'd think, okay, the capacity is how much it could treat. Well, that's not that simple. In the wastewater world, and in the world we work in, you've got a couple of different definitions. One is the quote-unquote physical capacity. What can the lines carry? What can the plant treat? As such, there is capacity in the sewer line itself, there is capacity at the wastewater plant itself. You know, I mentioned earlier that the plant is rated at 20 million gallons of capacity a day. Right now, it's treating around, according to sources of Horse Creek, between 12 and 13 million gallons a day on an average treatment day, can trend upwards of 15 million gallons a day during a rain event. So we're seeing some available physical capacity at the plant. However, the sticking point or the problem that we're having right now in the regional system is permitted capacity. And that is the number that the Department of Environmental Services, what we all used to call DHEC, is what they calculate as the capacity. So every time a new development, whether it's commercial, residential, what have you, comes onboard, there is a number that is used to associate how much projected sewer that they will discharge. For instance, if you have 100 homes, they make you use a calculation of 300 gallons per home per day, so you should come out in the neighborhood of 30,000 gallons per day for that facility. However, what we see historically is a much less, much lower load than that. That real number is probably around 150 gallons a day. So that in and of itself has the numbers vastly skewed from what has been permitted to what is actually being treated and what's actually going through the plants. As such, the, what I'm going to call permitted or paper numbers right now, have the plant at capacity. And since it is at capacity on paper, they can't take anymore, or DHEC's not going to permit anymore against it. Okay, so that's kind of the capacity piece of the puzzle out of the way. Some of the things that are being done right now to try to alleviate the situation, the folks at Horse Creek and some of the neighboring utilities have been petitioning DHEC to allow them to sell capacity against a future upgrade. So Horse Creek is designing and permitting right now, as we speak, a 6 million gallon per day upgrade to their plant. What I understand is there is the possibility that DHEC will allow them to allot capacity against that proposed future upgrade number, that 6 million gallons. So that's on the books, that's being worked on. The other thing that is going on right now is an audit of all the contributing sources that go into the, into the current facility. So for instance, we get a printout of our lists from them, what they say we're contributing, and we go through and say, okay, well, that's great, that was never built, so let's strike that 10,000 gallons off the list. It's not built, never was built, it was permitted in 1998, it's not going to exist. So we can free up some capacity that way, and that process has been ongoing with all the utilities that contribute into the, into the system as well. So trying to clean up that paperwork exercise any way we can to free up, again, the paper capacity number that we're working on. There, the million-dollar question that everybody wants to know is when will that process be complete, and I do not have an answer. I have to work through North Augusta, because again, remember, we don't own any capacity in the Horse Creek system, so we work with North Augusta, and then North Augusta submits to Aiken County. I have almost daily conversations with my counterpart in North Augusta, working on the list, trying to, anywhere we can find an extra few thousand gallons here or there, we've been working on that since the beginning of July, actually. Right now, we have several requests that are outstanding for sewer capacity for various commercial and residential developments in Edgefield County that we serve. We are prioritizing those by people that were either written capacity letters, willingness to serve letters. Those would be basically first come, first served, those will be in line for the initial, the initial ask that we have submitted to North Augusta, which is a neighborhood of 75,000 gallons per day. So not a lot in total that we're asking for, but we have yet to be granted that relief yet. They have submitted their information to Horse Creek, is my understanding, so we're awaiting a reply on that. Other things that we're looking at doing are trying to expand our current wastewater plants. We are relatively limited in what we can do initially from a monetary standpoint. We're in the middle of about a, of a $13 million upgrade of the water plant with another 20 or 30 million dollars on the horizon soon, so, you know, that's, that limits our capacity to do anything immediately in that regard. There are some things permitting-wise that we can, we can do to slightly increase our capacity there. However, that doesn't relieve a lot of the issue on the lower end of the county, because it doesn't make any financial sense to try to pump sewer from all the way back there all the way up here to treat. So we're limited in that regard. Long-term, things that we're looking at doing is, one, we're probably going to be looking at impact capacity fees going forward for development. That's going to be something that we'll probably see within the next 12 months, if I had to project that out. I don't have any idea what those fees are going to be right now, so we're, we're just in the, the procurement phase of looking at having that study done, so we're not anywhere near ready for those yet. Once capacity becomes available, we'd like to negotiate with North Augusta to buy additional capacity on Lower Inn, for our Lower Inn territory down there, how that capacity is going to be allotted by Horse Creek, and, and that, that's all to be worked out yet. I do not know how that is going to be executed right now. The other thing that has been talked about and would maybe be a very long-term project, and I know, I think we've had these discussions in economic development meetings in the past, is maybe we need our own large-scale wastewater treatment plant for Edgefield County. That is a noble and long-term goal. The issue we have is finding the right receiving stream for such a wastewater plant. That's going to be one of the hard issues we've got. Savannah River's available, but that's where we pull our drinking water from, North Augusta pulls theirs, Augusta pulls theirs, and we've only got a limited shore frontage on Savannah River to discharge into. So finding the appropriate water source for that would be a, would be a long-term goal as a, as an ultimate solution in having control ultimately. I'd be glad to take any questions about sewer capacity.
Well, and so just a couple here.
Obviously, we know this isn't, you're sort of the, I would call the middle man.
Yes.
You're, you're stuck here with decisions that were made by other people and whatever, so we won't discuss those, because they're not you. But from our perspective, are you, for council's purposes, both for commercial and industrial development, like Will Williams is here tonight, I'm wondering if he recruits a major industry or even a medium-sized industry to come into the industrial part, would there be sewer capacity to handle something like that?
Not at this time, not today, as we sit here right now, no.
And the same question then for subdivisions, you know, if we had somebody who wanted to build a particular Lower Inn, you know, 100, 200 home subdivision, would that be permitted today?
The answer today is no. Again, we put in a request for those who had already either been issued a year or so ago a willingness to serve letter, or those that were, I'm going to say, acting in good faith. And those are a minimum number, and then those have been requested, that's the 75,000 gallons that we've requested from North Augusta that they forwarded to Horse Creek, and that is all that we plan on requesting at this time today. Now, that could change. If there's, you know, what the answer will be from Horse Creek or North Augusta next week, the week after, I don't know. I would hope we can get this issue resolved in the next couple of weeks, but I've been saying that for a couple of weeks now as well, so I don't want to put any kind of timeframe on when it will be resolved, because I don't know.
One last question for me, just taking it down to the, to the bottom level. If a, if a new commercial business wants to open, or somebody just wants to build a home, a home, I assume those things can probably be done?
If they're around Johnston or Edgefield. If they're in Johnston or Edgefield, they can. Really, anything that would go into the regional system, which down there, again, that's a force main, so that would require putting in a pump station and a whole nother level of magnitude that generally a single family, one single-family home doesn't, doesn't get into. Most of those go on septic tanks. When you start looking at subdivisions or larger commercial-style developments, and that's when we would get into looking at tying them onto the regional system.
So for council's purposes, I wanted you to hear some of this, because you can see now, this is, to me, this is a developing, so I wanted y'all to hear about it, and y'all may have some questions too, but, so any questions from gentlemen?
So to bottom line it basically, this is a sewer moratorium with no, no, no end date, basically, what we're looking at.
As, as we sit today, as we sit today.
And I'm just going to say, my million-dollar question, you cannot answer, and I know, but I know I've shared it, we've all talked about this, as have representative picks it. My million-dollar question is, what do they do with the $40 million they had to upgrade before and got zero more capacity?
That's a very good question.
So this $60 million circuit now, how much more capacity, are we going to see some capacity? I mean, I'm assuming that they've got eyeballs on them this time.
Yes. So, so the 6 million gallon per day upgrade that they're looking at right now, I think they were awarded, it's, it's going to be in the 40, $50 million range, I don't think, they've not bid it yet, so we don't know exactly where it's going to come in. That's the initial price estimates I've heard. But that upgrade is supposed to get them the additional 6 million gallons of capacity per day.
What was the 40 million supposed to be?
No comment.
Fair enough, because it's not you that we need to correct this out, so I'm not coming at you, you know that, I'm not.
Yeah, oh, I, oh, I perfectly understand.
Yeah, yeah, so I bet these are things that we need across the board, these are our answers that we need at some point, and you can't, you cannot give them to us.
Yes.
But I think that we all need to continue, and I know that we, and people well above our, us on the beach, are asking these questions, and I appreciate that, but.
Absolutely.
At the end of the day, we need to know what happened there.
Of your 75,000 gallon request, can you tell us percentage-wise, how much is residential and how much is commercial?
I don't have it broken down percentage-wise. I would probably tell you 60% residential, 30% commercial.
There is some commercial in there?
Yes, yes.
Yep, that's good, okay. So I just have a few clarifying questions that I already know the answer to, but I think it's important for council. The first one, you're negotiating right now with North Augusta to get the capacity for the people who already hold a letter of approval for existing commercial and residential uses. And they may sell us that limited capacity, but with the only being 6 million gallons divided between Aiken, North Augusta, Edgefield, Saluda, I'm assuming that Aiken and North Augusta will get all of the capacity first, since we have to buy through them?
I have been told it is going to be on first serve, first come, so you've got to.
But you can't buy directly.
I cannot buy directly from the Aiken TSA.
So chances are, if they only have 6 million, and let's say they allocate three to, Aiken buys three and North Augusta buys three, the chances of North Augusta over the next few years selling any capacity to anybody is probably slim?
So what I have been told, Doc, is they are going, you're going to have to have a project in hand. In other words, you can't go and say, I want 3 billion gallons, here's my check. You've got to have a project. So if subdivision X is going to use 200,000.
So if subdivision X is going to use two hundred thousand gallons a day, and won't say, say resides in the city of Aiken, if the city of Aiken can buy two hundred thousand gallons, about two hundred and five, they can only buy two hundred. That's what I have been told.
Okay.
This is not all been spelled out in black and white. I want to reiterate that, and City of Aiken writing about that, so.
And then the only other clarifying question, given that I understand the permitting process, the design process, and the construction process for all of these things, what are the chances of a long-term solution in the next five to six years?
I'd have to direct that to Horse Creek.
Yeah, zero. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
And I do one, one question for Doc since, since you bring that up, and that is with the planning commission. So if somebody comes today with a project to the planning commission, can the planning commission approve it, or can they prove it a contingent on eventually getting sewer capacity? How would that work?
So that would be no, they cannot get approval. If the intent for that subdivision is to go on the public sewer system and that forced main is what they have to get in, we require in our ordinances that they give us a willingness to serve letter. Basically, it's just a letter that they have to go and negotiate with the water department saying that they're willing to provide that capacity. As you know, it's, it's against DEHEC regulations for you to build any home without potable water and sanitary sewer. So we can't legally issue a building permit without some sort of guarantee for those two things. An option that they would have is they could build much larger lot subdivisions, and then they could use wells and septic tanks instead of going on the sanitary sewer system. But the classic, you know, Keystone-type subdivision that you're used to seeing pop up rapidly, that is, that requires sewer. You cannot, you cannot build that many houses and use septic tanks. Townhouses, same thing, apartment complexes, same thing. Now, you will be able to see some commercial entities, they can use a septic tank. I mean, if you have a auto parts store, for example, well, auto parts store has two, two bathrooms with maybe four toilets total and a couple of sinks. Septic tank can handle that with no problem. They're not producing enough waste to be an issue. But a nursing home is absolutely not going on a septic tank. You have to have sewer for something like that to work.
Good, thank you. All right, council. If there's nothing else on that, then appreciate John here being here.
Thank you, John.
Appreciate y'all being here. All right, next up, we've asked Garrett Lynn, who is our EMS director, to come tonight. I talked about this last week. Wanted him to give you a, I'm going to call it the state of EMS and where we are and where we've been, so I'll turn it over to Garrett.
I want to first thank y'all for the invitation to come to talk to EMS, talk to you about EMS tonight. The first thing I want to talk about is, why is EMS important in Edgefield County? I'm sure you all know someone, or maybe you yourselves have had to call 911. It's been described that dialing 911 for EMS can be a life-changing call. People often describe seconds feel like minutes, and minutes feel like hours while waiting for help. We want to always ensure that that help is coming. When that help does arrive, they're greeted by a comforting voice and a helping hand. It was just a few years ago that the state of South Carolina considered EMS an essential service. I believe that we are more than essential, we are lifeline to the citizens in our county. Our citizens depend on us to be there when they call us. EMS has no regular business hours, we serve around the clock, day, night, weekends and holidays, so that we can be there when people need us. Council, we, we need your help. Our citizens need your help. When they dial 911, Edgefield County ambulance is what we always want coming to them. And there's four kind of topics I was going to talk about tonight, our staff, ambulances, our building, and then some of our equipment. And you'll hear me say this a lot, that our staff is the most important component to our EMS service. They are the paramedics and EMTs who our citizens depend on. I'm happy to say at the moment that we are currently fully staffed, however, that's subject to change at any moment or time. With council's help, we've been able to maintain adequate staff and give crucial raises to our staff. However, we're in a unique time in healthcare where paramedics are more desirable than ever. Hospitals are hiring paramedics rapidly and will pay them more with no additional training. Paramedic R M Bridge program is also becoming very popular, and we have one of our supervisors leaving in October to take a job on as R M. To compound this, additional, additional training hours have been added to EMS programs that's taking longer to get paramedics and EMTs into the field. The South Carolina EMS Association conducted a study two years ago and found that the average career in EMS is five years. We, along with the association, are working on initiatives to increase that longevity in EMS. Currently, we operate two ambulances here in Edgefield, one QRV that operates there in Edgefield, and then in Merryweather, we have one ambulance there. So for the first twelve hours of the day, we have seven total staff working. After eight o'clock, that QRV, it becomes inactive, and then we have six people working. So there's three ambulances working around the clock. With that, we average about thirty-seven hundred calls a year, and we're seeing a two percent increase in our call volume from year to year. We also have mutual aid agreements with Saluda McCormick County, so in the event that we have a fifth or sixth call, that we have some help, and we help them as well. Our ambulances, as you well know, dependable ambulances vital getting to the patient and getting them back to the hospital. Our current frontline ambulances, and these are our ambulances that are, are first out, they all exceed a hundred thousand miles each, with one of those having over two hundred and forty thousand miles. We have designed our new ambulance that will have many safety and functional features built into it. It will be a one-of-a-one ambulance that we hope many other services will follow our model for that. And council, if you remember, we placed that order about two and a half years ago, and we expect that ambulance to arrive in March of 2025. So it's three years now to, to get a brand-new ambulance. Our current spare fleet consists of two ambulances that are ten-plus years old, and they both exceed three hundred and thirty thousand miles. These ambulances constantly need repair and become, become less and less reliable. However, with council's help, we received our new remount last week. This was a deadlined ambulance that had a major engine failure that we sent out, and the best way to describe a remount is kind of like a home remodel. We put a new chassis up under it, it got repainted, it's got a new AC unit in it. To the common person, it looks like a brand-new ambulance, and it's a, it's a very good-looking ambulance. And I've, I've got a little PowerPoint, and I was going to show some pictures of our buildings and stuff, so kind of sometimes a picture is worth a thousand words. So this is our EMS headquarters. This building was built in the early nineties, it's a prefab steel building. Originally, it was designed as a two-bed, two-and-a-half-bath with some office space, a kitchen, and then a dayroom. And it has four bays across the front of it. What I'm trying to highlight in these two pictures is, is that you can see how small the bay is comparison to the trucks that we have now. So this first picture, this is the biggest ambulance we have, it's a Ford F-550. That's about how tight it is in that bay. I always say if they make ambulances one foot longer, that we won't be able to fit them into the bay. The second picture, this is the ambulance next to it, and what I wanted to show you here was is that how tight that space is so that when our staff goes out, they have to kind of walk around that bumper. To me, it just kind of creates a safety risk that they could trip, currently host our monthly training right here in this building. First picture on your left, that's kind of in the back corner looking back out towards the exit door. Thankfully to Joe, he's been able to help kind of reshape this room for us. That, that little white room right there, Joe built that as a storage closet, we run out of storage in the building. This picture to the right, where this little mailbox is, that's my training officer, Mike Butler's office. So it used to be our training room, because when we added additional crews, those two offices in the back became bedrooms. So we, we lost that space to host training in there. So now it's just kind of a entryway for the staff to come in. It serves as office space, storage, and bedrooms now. And this is the, just kind of a general snapshot of the interior. So this picture on the left is our dayroom. It can comfortably seat about four people in there, and then behind it is the kitchen. And it can get pretty crowded in the mornings when they, they do breakfast. The picture to the right is, that actually used to be Mike's office, so that was an office, but now is a bedroom. And at night, those two people that stay in those two bedrooms have access to a half-bath, they don't have access to a full bathroom. And this is the exterior storage, so this is at the back of the building. And kind of what I wanted to show you here is that, so we have three ambulances back there, that's the only place we have to put them. There's a little carport back there, you could park one ambulance under it, but we essentially have to store all of our spare ambulances back there. And that grayish building to the left, thank goodness Foster, through grant funding, was able to procure that building for us, and that's where we house all of our supplies now. So where that was stored inside, in a very small room, we at least have enough space to store it outside. Again, weather challenges, moving stuff in and out can become a problem. And so this is our substation in Merryweather. This is in the Merryweather Fire Department on Martin Town Road. What I wanted to show you in this picture was is that, so you can see the ambulance right there in the middle, that's the only ambulance bay we have down there. The fire department uses both bays on either side, and in this particular picture, there's, there's usually a brush truck on the other side of that ambulance. So where this becomes a challenge is we don't, we're not able to store an ambulance, a spare ambulance down there. That has to come from Edgefield down there. And then this is kind of the inside of it. So this picture on the left is, is what we would call the dayroom. So they have a, a small kitchenette, they have a little dayroom themselves, but this is a shared space with the fire department. So they have, fire chief has an office in there, their secretary, so this is kind of a busy, busy place. And then this picture on the right is one of the bedrooms, so there's two, we only have two bedrooms there, one bathroom. And what I want to show you in this picture is, is that in that corner, that's, we have to store all of our supplies in that bedroom. So all of our medical supplies, cleaning supplies, they all have to kind of be packed into there because essentially just don't have anywhere else to store those. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was what I would call our ALS equipment. So I put it all in one picture, but I'm going to talk about them each individually. So the stretcher, or the, the technical term is a power pipe. Those cots are over twelve years old. Council helped us purchase those back in 2012. They still function, they work, but due to their age, they require more repair. We have service contracts on them, but it's, they constantly need some work. We currently have six of those, we have one for each ambulance. That piece of equipment gets used on every call, pretty much no matter what. The cardiac monitor that's up there on the left, to me, that is probably one of the most critical pieces of equipment that we have. This is wonderful, if somebody's having a heart, I wouldn't say wonderful for the patient, but if they're having a heart attack, this is how we determine that, this is how we defibrillate people, pace, cardiovert. This is a true ALS piece of equipment. Fortunately, we only have three of them. So in the event that there's a failure in the equipment, or there's an issue with it, we have to wait to have one overnighted to get to us. If that's on a Friday night, that won't arrive till Monday or Tuesday. We don't have any spares to use, so we would have paramedics who wouldn't have those diagnostic capabilities available to them. And then the last piece of equipment, that's, that's kind of arched piece of equipment, that's what they call the Lucas CPR machines. That's what we use on people that are in cardiac arrest, and it does all the CPR for us. It's a wonderful tool, it has helped us tremendously. Again, we only have three of those. So again, in the event we have a fourth call, there's a failure in it, we don't have that critical piece of equipment. So they're, they're very expensive, but we, again, we only have three of them to operate with. Each ambulance we operate has one, we just have no, nothing beyond that. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I hope that kind of gave you a glimpse into what EMS, where it currently is and how we're operating.
Questions from council?
Your spares you keep outside, do you have to empty them out of all the supplies because of the heat?
So we keep supplies that are not sensitive to heat in them. We keep them plugged up, they constantly need power, so we're able to keep them charged. And they do stay locked, but they're not inside of a locked, locked building.
Any other questions?
So I understood, you say there's a half-bath in the, in the headquarters, but not a full bath?
Yes, so there's two, two full baths, and those bathrooms are the two original bedrooms.
Okay.
When that building was originally built, it only housed one, one ambulance crew, so they each had their own bathroom. The half-bath is in the hallway, so that's for myself, or the public, or the employees to use. Like I said, at night, those two that stay in that back bedroom have access to a sink and a toilet, they just don't have access to a shower because obviously somebody's in that bedroom trying to sleep. I'm sure they would let them come in there if it was an emergency or something, but they, they don't have their own bathroom to use.
Now, will y'all be able to use the training site at the new LEC?
We, we hope so. I, I think the sheriff would be accommodating to us.
So you won't need another additional training site, correct? You've got one there and you use this now, but once LEC is up and running, they can use that one, correct? We won't have to have EMS a separate training site? Is that?
We would prefer ultimately to have our, our own. Again, if the sheriff is training, or maybe on the same day that we're training, that, again, it's, it's just like this building. We schedule the redraw when there's things going on here, so we kind of plan our training around, and this building is not.
I'm just looking at all this and knowing there's a price tag attached, so I'm like totem-polling it here. For me, if you have a space to go to, that would be lower on the totem pole versus maybe, say, the cardiac machine that you have no backup to. It's concerning, you know? I would say we need some more backups.
Other questions from council? All right, Garrett?
Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you, Garrett. And I, I will say that I think that Garrett and the administrator and staff are working on a proposal to bring to us perhaps next month to discuss this.
That is correct. We're actively working on solutions to all of these problems, and we will have a report to council next month.
And I, I would call it a comprehensive solution, meaning it's not a piecemeal, it's more comprehensive to look at everything, not just one thing.
That is correct.
All right, thank you. All right, council, we're moving through the agenda slow, I know, but now it'll pick up. So next is the approval of the minutes. Council, any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Moody makes the motion. Dr. Kenyon seconds, the August sixth, 2024 regular meeting minutes, any discussion? Hearing none, although it's in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next is comments from the public. I'll ask our clerk, did anyone sign up?
No, sir.
Okay, since no one signed up, council, for the first public comment period, I will close that and move to reports. So council, any questions or comments on the reports? Hearing none, we'll move to old business. First, we need to have consideration of approval of third reading of ordinance number 2324005 and ordinance amending chapter 32 of the Edgefield County ordinances and nuisances. So I'll ask the administrator what we might need to discuss in this third So I'll ask the administrator what we might need to discuss in this third and final reading.
There are no major changes, but our friends with the forestry commission did make a suggestion to add a sentence that would clarify things like agricultural and prescribed burning would be exempt from burn prohibitions. Each member of council has a copy of the ordinance, and this change would be on page five. And it is highlighted in yellow. And under exemptions to the burning prohibition, it simply reads vegetative debris burning related to forestry, wildlife, and agricultural burns as authorized by the state forestry commission. And we agree with that change. It does clarify these exemptions.
Is that the only change we need to consider tonight?
That is correct, yes.
Council, any questions or comments on that? All right, to add that in, we'll have to make a motion and then amend. So I'll ask then, is there a motion to give third reading to ordinance 2324005?
So moved, Mr. Cham.
And Mr. Talbot makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And Ms. Ireland seconds. Now we're under discussion. To put this in, we need to amend. So I will be happy to make the motion to amend this ordinance to add in item D on page five that the administrator just read to us, that one sentence. So that is my amendment. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Moody seconds. Any discussion on the amendment? Hearing none, is there, so we've already made, so yes, so if there's no discussion, all those in favor of the amendment, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. We're now back to the main motion. Is there any questions or comments on this ordinance? Hearing none. We've already had discussion, so all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, council, is number two under old business. Consideration of approval of third reading of ordinance 2324004 and ordinance amending the tri-county solicitor's budget to add an additional 170,321 in revenue from the tri-county solicitor's fund and 170,321 in expenditures for salaries and benefits. I'll ask the administrator, since this is third reading, final reading, is there anything new or different we need to consider tonight?
There's no new information.
Okay. Anything from council, questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, is there a motion to give third reading to ordinance number 2324004?
Same.
Ms. Ireland makes the motion, is there a second? And Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, although it's in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Now we're down to new business. This is, uh, the first item of new business is consideration of recommendation for appointment to the Edgefield County Fire Board. This is normally something we would have in a consent agenda, but we only have one item, so it's, there is no consent agenda. So any questions or comments on this appointment? Anything from?
Nothing.
Okay. If there's no questions or comments, is there a motion to approve this appointment?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Moody makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Talbot seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, although it's in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. We took up number two earlier under new business, we'll move to number three. Consideration of approval of the first reading of ordinance 2425003 authorizing the execution and delivery of a special source revenue credit agreement by and between Edgefield County, South Carolina, and Project Trailblazer, acting for itself, one or more affiliates, affiliates, and other project sponsors, collectively called sponsor, to provide certain infrastructure with respect to the establishment and/or expansion of certain facilities in the county, authorizing certain infrastructure credits and other related matters. Uh, we'll call the administrator so he can explain to us why we have a change in this from last month.
Yes, thank you. So as the chairman mentioned, a similar item was taken under consideration last month, and it was a fee in lieu of taxes agreement for Project Trailblazer. But after consideration, we discovered that a new incentive, a special source revenue credit, would be the more appropriate way of handling this type of credit, which is why we're holding first reading again. A special source revenue credit is simply a property tax abatement tool that discounts the amount of the manufacturer's annual property tax liability. This is used in conjunction with the multi-county industrial park. Council approved this with first reading last month. So if this is approved, we'll take both, well, we'll take second reading of each in October. But this will have the same effect on taxes as the fee in lieu of taxes arrangement that council approved last month. So there's no real change for the tax revenue that the county will, will earn. And again, the actual name of the company will be revealed at the time of the public hearing advertisement, and typically that's for third reading for these type of arrangements. That's all.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to give first reading approval to ordinance number 2425003?
So moved.
Dr. Kenyon makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
And Mr. Talbot seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, although it's in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next, under new business, number four is consideration of approval of the tax millage rate for the fiscal year upcoming, or in we're into. So I will ask the auditor, as he does every year, to come up and please give us the explanation of what we need to do.
It looks like I'm gonna make it home in time for Andy Griffith tonight, doesn't it?
Yeah. Sorry.
Um, to start with, I just want to kind of go over our values before we get into the millage rates y'all are gonna pass. Currently, valued a mill going into this year is gonna be 109,490 for county operations. Obviously, last year it was 100,750. So things are progressing well now. Obviously, higher percentage residential homes and vehicles. And that's gonna continue based on the information I get from David, through Doc's office in the building department. That's a good thing. Obviously, you'd always like to see more business come in. Do have a few of those. Like to see a lot more. But anyway, so with that, vehicles and the homes are creating most of this increase in the value. And obviously, utilities and manufacturers are holding their own. And obviously, you know, what is huge in our county now is a fee in lieu of. And so I just wanted to go over where we finished last year, basically just under fee in lieu of. With the whole county, last year about 1.6 million plus. That's county schools and all the entities in the levy. About 370,000 of that was for the budget that you control. This year, that's going up to 1.8 million dollars plus, which will drive up the county ops about 410,000. So with the current base, there are no new fees this year. There was some new investment with two fees that are already on the books. So that means an investment that took place last year is coming on this year. It started last year and was completed, but it's already in two active fee in lieu of agreements that are already in the county. So that is, that is obviously, you know, good, good for this county as well. So with that, with the millage rates that y'all will be dealing with tonight, that you're gonna pass, before we do that, based on what I'm looking at right now, with the whole county, or the $200,000 home, taxes are basically gonna come down about $48, okay? Now, what that means is about $32 of that, the school bond is dropping, another four mills, need to keep that going every year. It's gonna be good savings to the taxpayers. The other $16 is the local auction sales credit money, which we're using 2 million this year to, that I formulate with the appraisal value in the county. So that's the $48, which is good. Uh, now, a little bit of not-so-good news. Town of Johnston, town Edgefield, both are increasing their public works fees, $48 apiece. Edgefield's going from 180 to 228. Johnston is going from 96 to 144 dollars. And I just want to say that what this means for people that are in y'all's district in these two towns, Trenton is not involved.
That's right.
But if they're getting homestead exemption, and they live in their home, and their value is $50,000, they're gonna have a net increase of $48. They will not see a decrease from that fee increase, because their value is just 50. So if their house is valued at 200, and they live in Edgefield or Johnston, and they're gonna have a net increase with one of the towns, but then that's gonna come down and start getting eaten up by the decrease with the school bond millage and the local auction sales credit factor. Obviously, Edgefield does not have a local auction credit factor. They don't have a millage rate. Johnston does, and their credit's gonna be up a little bit, so that will heal. But you just need to know that, that, I mean, obviously, they're gonna call the tax office, you know, and, and obviously, we'll explain it to whoever gets the call. But, I mean, you may get some calls on there, because that's, that's a pretty, pretty good bump there. So anyway, just wanted you to know that. Okay? Y'all got any questions for, give you the millage rate? Last year and this year, the millage rate, what you govern, is 108.49. Last year, it was 2.06 on the debt service for the county. Last year EMS was 11.70. So there's a mill coming off of debt service with the county and going to EMS. So debt service is 1.06, and EMS is 12.70. So there's no increase with the millage rate at all. That's about all I got, unless y'all got a few questions. I like questions.
So the, the, the bottom line millage rate that we need to approve tonight is 108.49?
That's right.
And, and that is not in any way an increase for anybody hearing this, that is just to match the no increase budget that we passed earlier this year.
Right. That's right.
Any other questions or comments from council?
So, okay. I have to come to the office. Because you know, so by me being in Trenton, right, I will not see a millage rate.
No. You talking about where you live?
Right.
No.
Okay. That's good to know.
All that money you make, you need to. Actually, the credit for the town of Trenton, you don't live in the town, right? So you just live out in the county? You do?
Kind of, sorta.
Are you in the town?
Well, is it district OT or one for county?
I'm, I'm, no, I'm not in the county.
Okay. You're in the town of Trenton?
Yeah. No, I'm not in the town of Trenton. I'm in the county. On the ouster, yeah, wherever needs.
Your, your tax bill will be down. What I'm saying is, the people that you represent, I mean, your district comes over into the town of Johnston a little bit, I know Dean's does. And Albert, your district comes in like town of Edgefield, so.
Mm-hmm.
Tiffany, I don't think you're involved.
Hey, Siri and I are not involved. Yeah, we're out of there.
But anyway, just wanted you to know, yeah, your, your tax bill will be down.
That's all she wanted to know.
They're not gonna call you in. Anyway, so y'all just need to vote on that millage rate.
Other questions or comments from council?
I have none.
Okay. Hearing none, thank you to Bill for being here tonight and doing this. So with that, council, I'll ask, is there a motion to approve what's been presented tonight that our millage rate needs to be 108.49?
So moved.
Okay. Mr. Moody makes the motion, and Dr. Kenyon seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, although it's in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Dean, one other thing, I want to thank the administrative building and council for sending the flower arrangement that my mom passed. Means a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you so much.
Okay. That ends the new business tonight. I'll ask the clerk, did anyone sign up for the second public comment section?
No.
All right, council, since nobody signed up, then we'll close that public comment section and move to reports from council members. Any reports from any council member tonight?
I just want to tell y'all that soccer, again, has some record numbers in our soccer league, and so it's just continuing to grow. I think this is just a reflection of our commitment to rec and, and all the things that we have going on. I know Dave is gonna have another announcement, I think, tonight regarding rec.
Yes.
Okay. So it's just, you know, we made that commitment, and, and I think we're seeing that just grow and grow. Thank y'all again for your support, and just look forward and invite y'all out to come watch some of our games.
Any other reports from council members?
Everybody down my way, get your pickleball paddles out, it's almost open. About two more weeks.
Hearing no other reports, then I will move on to the county administrator.
Thank you. I have several project updates, and, and many of them do revolve around our recreation programs. A Sweetwater Park, the playground and the pickleball courts are nearing completion. Next will be installation of a shelter and fencing around the playground. We hope to open this park in October and November, and I know the playground will be complete and the pickleball court will be complete, but you would almost have to walk through a construction site for the building, so we just ask the public to be patient. We will have to put some closed signs up. But everything's looking great out there. On Bettis Park, the pickleball and basketball courts should be done, and they'll be open earlier, because there's no surrounding construction. They should be open for play in two or three weeks, I would imagine. We have come to an arrangement with a yoga instructor with our recreation department, Tasha Slusha, a resident of Edgefield County, will be teaching yoga classes at the Scout Hut for all fitness levels. Tuesdays, 7 to 8 p.m., Saturdays, 11 a.m. to noon. Our recreation director has been hard at work to try to find people to teach various things for adults and children, and he's, he's worked hard to secure this one, and we're happy about that. I would encourage the public to come try this out. I've done yoga myself, it won't kill you, it's actually, actually good. And there are no contracts. You pay $12 per class. This is a deal that's much less expensive than surrounding areas, and this is a person that teaches at surrounding schools, so it's quality program for less money for our residents. Details will be on our website and registration forms. We had a record soccer program signups for the fall season, and these numbers may not be completely accurate, because some drop out and some add on, but we had 170 in soccer, we had 110 in football, 66 in cheerleading, and 50 for softball. So our rec programs are, are moving up, and, and they're strong programs. We're getting a good feedback from participants, so we're, we're very happy about that. The law enforcement center remains on schedule. It is an incredible building. I'm looking forward to, to the time in December when it's done and, and the public can see what it's all about. We're, again, been very happy with the contractor. There's been a lot fewer bumps than you might expect for a project this large. So we're very happy with that, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Hearing none, thank you. And the assistant administrator?
Um, I gave y'all a copy of the comp plan changes that came from the planning commission. I know that y'all will probably want to set up your own meeting to address that directly amongst yourselves. I, I kind of put a guide in the front of the book to just help you go through it, but primarily, they focused on chapter seven. Most of the changes you'll see before then are just administrative changes, updating numbers, that sort of thing. And then the primary thing that y'all are really gonna have to work on yourselves, of course, is chapter nine, so your priority investment portfolio, basically. The only requirement of law is that we start the process in 2024, which obviously we've done, so we've met the legal requirements, so y'all don't have to feel rushed if you want to, you know, decide to have an additional public hearing, or decide to have workshops on it, or however you decide to do it, it, it won't be an issue. So I was just letting you know why you got two books. So I was just letting you know why you got two books instead of one.
Council, if you don't have any objection, I would like to ask, excuse me, I've got some drainage going on. I'd like to ask if we can do maybe a workshop on this, perhaps in September? If y'all don't have an objection, I don't have a date. But much like we do the budget workshop, where staff talks to us, we talk among ourselves, but no decisions are made. It'd be a chance for us to talk, understand, get a good understanding, ask a lot of questions, and then go back and think about it, and bring it up at a, at a subsequent meeting. It could be October, it could be November, it could be just another meeting in the future. So we want to do that, because I think it takes a little time. In other words, more time than I think you want to invest at a meeting, because it'd be a very long meeting, that we'd have to do it with other business. So I would like to do that. I don't have a date. I'll ask the administrator and maybe the assistant administrator to help us work out a date in September that would suit everybody, weeknight, you know, 6 o'clock.
Okay, we'll take care of it.
And then we can all, whatever we all can agree to that we're available. Anything else from? All right, excuse me. Well, tonight, we heard some really critical information on a number of issues, and I appreciate those who brought those messages to us. County council always needs the best available information to help us in our, in our decision-making. So I appreciate that. Yeah, excuse me. When it comes to EMS, I know we're all looking forward to discussing a path forward that can help us do what I believe we should already be doing for the citizens in terms of emergency care. I look forward to seeing what our EMS director and staff bring us next month to start the critical decision-making process that will bring us long-term, pre-hospital health care to, to a level that the citizens deserve. Also, based on what I've just mentioned and what the planning commission is sending us, I think you'll see the rest of the year and into next year, we'll be discussing some key items to position Edgefield County for the future. So it's an important time in, in what we're doing. So with that, council, there is no other business to conduct tonight. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Same.
Ms. Ireland makes the motion, and Dr. Kenyon, seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for coming.